Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the June Hoboken Board of Education meeting. It's hard to believe that we are approaching the last few days of the school year. And with that being said, I wish everyone a happy, healthy summer break. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on May 20th, 2022 and May 26, 2022. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recorder will also be made available on board docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the deform of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Katamatori?
Here.
Ms. Delira?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Clubful?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Ms. Simons?
Here.
Mr. Kieran?
Here.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Do you have a floor?
Okay, at this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, for the recognition portion of our meeting.
Good evening, members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, families, and of course, the students and their very special guests, their families. It is always my honor to stand before you and introduce our fantastic principals as they take the podium to celebrate and share detailed information and anecdotes about why these students are being honored here this evening. Tonight, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of ten fantastic students as they are honored as the Students of the Month for the months of both May and June. They truly embody the definition of excellence. Everyone in this room and those who will surely see this from their homes are so very proud of them. As is our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brandt School Principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection at the podium and then, of course, memorialize the moment with a picture. He will then introduce the Connors Vice Principal, Mr. Sor... And he will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Principal Shannon, Mara, and Pika Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High Schools. Once Hoboken High School honors its students for both May and June, our Dr. Baskinger of Hoboken Middle School will then return or take the podium for additional honors and recognitions. Thank you for your attention, and with that, I would invite Principal Bartlett up to the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, and good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call up Malia Johnson to the podium. Congratulations to Malia Johnson, the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for May 2022. Malia was nominated by her third-grade teacher, Ms. Kontogianis. Ms. Kay said, "I nominated Malia Johnson because she has shown tremendous growth and progress this year. Since the beginning of the school year, Malia's interest in language arts and mathematics has grown tremendously. One of the things that makes me most proud of her is her ability to personally connect with and identify with what we are learning this year. She is positive and dedicated to doing well in class. I can count on Malia to do her best no matter what. She will offer to help others if they are struggling in a respectful manner that supports the classroom environment. It is a joy to watch Malia grow in third grade." Malia displays excellent character as a student at Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School. Ms. Kay also said, "It's not about perfection, it's about effort. When you bring that effort every single day, that's where transformation happens." As principal, I certainly agree. I see that effort and desire in Malia each day at Brandt, and she has very quietly emerged as a tremendous leader with a million-dollar smile. Malia consistently stays true to herself and is honest. She handles matters among her peers independently and in a positive way, both in the classroom and out at recess. She looks out for her peers and does her very best to help others in need. Malia makes choices daily that showcase her integrity. She follows directions, stays on task, puts forth tremendous effort into every piece of work she does, and sets an example for others without being asked. Malia enjoys playing basketball and softball. She was a part of the Brandt Basketball Gold Team this year. She stated that she feels very confident when she's playing sports. Malia was also a member of our Brandt School chorus. You can always find Malia singing and humming. When asked why she likes music, she said, "Music makes me feel calm, at peace, and happy." When Malia grows up, she wants to become a teacher. She wants to help young children learn about different subjects but also make them feel comfortable in class and have fun. She hopes to come back to Brandt School and be able to be a teacher there as she went to school there. If I'm still around when that happens, I will definitely hire you. "I feel very honored to receive not only..." I'm sorry. "I feel very honored to receive not only the Student of the Month for Mrs. Kay's third-grade classroom but to represent Brandt School," Malia said. "The beginning of the school year was challenging for me, but my teacher, Ms. Kay, believed in me and pushed me to work harder and never give up. My parents also helped me at home, especially with math. I learned that you always have to work hard and keep trying. We are all very proud of you, Malia, and keep working hard and keep trying." Congratulations to Malia Johnson, the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for May 2022. And at this time, I'd like to ask Damian Gatherz-Fontanot to join me at the podium. Congratulations to Damian Gatherz-Fontanot, our Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for June 2022. Damian was nominated by his kindergarten teacher, Ms. Grausso. Ms. Grausso said, "I nominated Damian because this past year he has grown and become a student who loves to come to school and is excited each and every day to learn something new. In the beginning of the school year, he was hesitant to try new things and had a tough time adjusting to kindergarten and the learning environment. If you met Damian in September and compared him to Damian now, it would be two completely different students. Today Damian enters the building with a huge smile on his face and is ready to learn. He understands the routine and expectations each day. There is so much excitement when he completes a task on his own." She went on to say, "The greatest part of being a teacher is finding ways to connect to your students and creating a bond that will last a lifetime. I have no doubt that Ms. Grausso and Damian made that connection, and they will stay in touch for the rest of his academic career with us. In the morning, when I'm getting ready for arrival time, I can usually count on Damian to be a big help when I ask him to bring Ms. Margaret, our security guard, her walkie-talkie. Sometimes when I hand him the radio and ask him to bring it to her, he'll look up at me and say something like, 'Ms. Margaret, here I come,' before he scampers down the hallway to her. Damian's list of achievements this year is incredible. He has grown in all subjects as well as socially and emotionally. In September, he had a difficult time expressing himself. Fast forward to now, he is able to use different strategies to express how he is feeling. Damian is full of laughter and really knows how to make each student and even the teachers around him laugh and really enjoy his presence. You can always count on him to say something funny when you need a smile. If you catch him at the right time during independent work, he will either be singing the wrong words to a song he just heard or doing a little dance move in between completing a sentence. Since the first month of school, Ms. Grausso knew Damian and she would have a special bond. Earlier in the year, Damian would sometimes get upset when Ms. Grausso would tell him it was time to clean up his Legos. When that happened, Damian would tell her that they were not friends anymore. Then, usually about two minutes later, he would tell Ms. Grausso, "You know I didn't mean that. I love you," and they would hug it out. Damian's hobbies include pretending to be a Power Ranger and building the tallest tower with Legos. He loves to go to the beach and will tell everyone about it several times a day. His favorite subject is Mandarin. His favorite color is red. He loves playing basketball and watching basketball on TV. He wants to be a firefighter when he gets older to help save lives. When asked how he feels about being the Student of the Month, Damian screamed, "Oh, wow, I'm happy. Does my mom know yet?" Well, she certainly does now, Damian. Congratulations once again to Damian Gatherz-Fontanot, the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for June 2022. At this time, I would like to call up the Vice Principal of Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, Mr. Ryan Sorefim.
Thank you, Principal Bartlett. At this time, I would like to call Joshua Lowing up to the podium, please. Joshua Lowing was nominated for Student of the Month by his fourth-grade homeroom teacher, Ms. Gwendolyn Rodriguez. Joshua is a thoughtful and detail-oriented student. Joshua has been a Connors Koala since pre-K4. Joshua was nominated for this honor because he has worked hard on achieving his academic and social goals during this school year. He began the school year a reluctant writer, sometimes getting stuck on what to write. Now he has developed his writing skills and strategies to produce exemplary work. Joshua is an asset to the class because he sets an example for his class participation and dedication to learning. He is kind and friendly to students and staff. His favorite subjects in school are art and music because he loves to draw and make music. He is a member of the Connors Band where he plays the drums. Joshua says he especially enjoys learning about geometry during math and that he even wrote his own song about the topic. Joshua loves his family and has a tight bond with his two older brothers, Dylan and Devon. He shows responsibility at home by helping with chores such as laundry and grocery shopping. Joshua has many interests outside of school. He loves to play with model trains and playing on his tablet using his love of music to create songs on FL Studio. Joshua also loves taking care of his cat, Miracle. Joshua is not sure where he wants to go to college nor what he wants to study. However, he knows he wants to attend college as close to Hoboken as possible so they can still be near his family. Very nice. Joshua's father, Mr. Ronald Lowing, was thrilled to find out Joshua was receiving this award. He explained, "Joshua makes me proud as a dad. I'm glad to see that he is trying harder as time goes by. He is moving forward. I am proud of him and his report card. I am so proud of my son." Joshua was a little surprised to learn he was receiving the honor of District Student of the Month for Connor School. When asked how he felt about the award and attending Connor School, Joshua replied, "It's pretty great. I am happy and proud of myself. I don't know why I was chosen. Maybe it's just random." Choosing Joshua certainly is not random. He has definitely earned this award. Ms. Kapalbo shared that Joshua has worked so hard in art class. His cartoons have turned into comics and some truly amazing stories. He has shown such growth in his art-making skills over the past few months. His drawings and paintings are elaborate and purposeful. Joshua should be proud of his achievements this school year. Mr. Rosado shared that Joshua is an amazingly self-motivated music student who excels in all areas of music. Music is part of his personality, and I am sure he will always use this as inspiration to help him along the way as he grows academically throughout his years in the Hoboken Public School District. Joshua's perseverance is truly remarkable. Babe Ruth said it's hard to be a person who never gives up. This is Joshua. He keeps going even when things are tough, and he has persevered and achieved so many of his goals. Our Connor School family is tremendously proud of you, Joshua. Please join me in giving a round of applause for Joshua Lowing, the Connor Student of the Month as he exemplifies the qualities of Connor's. At this time, I would like to invite Aaron Bishop up to the podium. Congratulations to Aaron Bishop, the Connor Student of the Month for the month of May. Aaron is a fifth grader in Ms. Ortiz's class. Ms. Ortiz shared that Aaron is a student who comes in every day, ready to learn and try his best. If he does not understand something, he uses the growth mindset to push forward and grow. He is kind and respectful to his peers, teachers, and the school administration. He always participates and is eager to get started on his work. Not only does Aaron finish his work quickly and with pride, but he also helps his peers succeed. He models appropriate behavior at all times and stares clear of problematic situations. Ms. Ortiz shared that Aaron's personality has truly flourished this year, and it's been amazing to watch him grow and be comfortable to be silly and make jokes. His dry humor makes Ms. Ortiz giggle all too often. He is one of our fifth-grade boys' basketball champions who are undefeated this season. A baseball player, a proud member of the Connors Band and Choir, he is engaged in STEM workshops and trips through the district and is part of the Johns Hopkins CTY program. We asked Aaron's classmates their thoughts on Aaron achieving Student of the Month. They all agreed that Aaron is a good classmate because he is really funny, helpful, and a good friend. Mr. Rosado shared that throughout Aaron Bishop's years at Connors, he has demonstrated a passion for music that is inspirational to all his classmates. He is a dedicated trumpet player with natural talent for music that is rarely seen at his age. I am sure the passion and dedication for music will grow as he moves forward with his education at Hoboken Middle School. Ms. Jah shared that Aaron always tries his best and takes pride in his work. He engages himself in every lesson and sets an excellent example for his peers with quality work and respect. Aaron's mom, Helen, our Connors PTO lead, shared that she is so proud of how Aaron gets along with everyone. He does so well in his class because everyone is a friend to him. He is able to juggle both his passions for sports and academics. Besides basketball, he loves baseball, flag football. He plans to play basketball in college and then get drafted by the NBA. He is such a good brother to his sister Audrey. Aaron's dad, Stephen Bishop, who is also the coach of our third, fourth, and fifth-grade Connors basketball team, shared that Aaron's love of basketball and expertise on the court helped lead the team to an undefeated season. Congratulations, Aaron. Your teachers are so proud of you and your achievements. We know that you have a bright future ahead of you. You will be missed, but will always be a Connors Koala. Please give him a round of applause. And lastly, I would like to invite Aleah Pajmino up to the podium, please. Congratulations to Aleah Pajmino, the Connors District Student of the Month for the month of June. Aleah is a second grader in Ms. Sevo's class. Ms. Sevo shared that Aleah is highly motivated student who participates in class activities with creativity and a great deal of enthusiasm. Her willingness to lead, organize, and inspire others is well noted. She is kind and welcoming to all students in and out of the classroom. Aleah is an asset to both our classroom and Connor School community for many reasons. Aleah shows self-discipline. She is diligent, punctual, courteous, confident, responsible, goal-oriented, and has a growth mindset that motivates her to move ahead in a positive way. Some of Aleah's interests are going to Madison Park and Chuck E. Cheese, listening to rap music, and watching NBA basketball. She is very artistic, so it's no surprise that her favorite subject in school is art. When Aleah grows up, she wants to be a famous singer. We asked Aleah how she felt when she found out that she was District Student of the Month. She said that, "I am pretty, smart, and proud to be the District Student of the Month." We asked Aleah's classmates their thoughts on Aleah being awarded Student of the Month. Izzy said that Aleah is kind, funny, and smart, and Trent shared that Aleah likes to pick up flowers and give them to her friends. That's very nice. Every classmate had something positive to say about her because Aleah is a friend to everyone. Ms. Jah shared that during Mandarin, Aleah is focused on her work and respectful to everyone. Ms. Jones and Ms. Hanbury shared that Aleah is a very sweet and highly motivated student with a calm disposition that allows her to be successful. Ms. Kershers shared that Aleah has a kind heart, sweet disposition, and a clear willingness to listen and learn. She displays this daily in her attitude towards her teachers and peers. Aleah demonstrates perseverance and commitment to succeed. She is smart, inquisitive, and hard-working young lady who exemplifies just what a student of the month should be. Congratulations to Aleah. You have all of the qualities of a Connors Koala, and we are so proud of you. At this time, I would like to invite Principal Shannon up to the podium. At this time, I'd like to invite Janiah Fuller to the podium, please. We are here tonight to celebrate Janiah Fuller as the Wallace School Student of the Month for May 2022. Janiah was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Insatari, because of the exceptional growth she has demonstrated in both academic and social endeavors over the course of the school year. Janiah perseveres even when tasks are very challenging. She has grown to enjoy learning and often asks for extra work. Janiah displays fantastic participation with an arm raise at every chance. Janiah is a team player and always volunteers to help her teachers and fellow Wildcats. For these reasons, Janiah has made great strides in all subjects. Janiah has made remarkable improvement in phonics skills and has raised her DRA2 score two levels in a short time. Janiah is an eager learner in science class who loves to explore the natural world, and she is also an enthusiastic mathematician and is skilled at using manipulatives creatively to solve problems. Most importantly, Janiah has learned to advocate as she uses her voice to speak up for herself and her peers. Janiah is an asset to the classroom and the Wallace School because she is a fantastic role model for her peers. Her smile is infectious. Janiah's positivity radiates throughout the Wallace community. When she's not rocking it at school, Janiah loves to sing, dance, play puppet show on her tablet, and play with her toy puppy. Janiah's favorite music is from her favorite movie, Encanto. Her favorite subjects in school are all of them. Janiah wants to be a teacher when she grows up. Janiah's classmates and teachers are so proud of her, here's what they had to say. "Janiah is cool and nice," said her friend Jaden. "I like to play with her because she is nice and a good friend," exclaimed Ivan. "When someone is feeling down, Janiah will ask them if you're okay and if they need a hug,"added Ms. Teresa. Felix said that she has good brains and a good heart. And finally, Mrs. Insatari added, "Janiah's Wildcat roar may be soft and sweet, but it's fierce and powerful." Janiah embodies the Wallace Wildcat spirit, and it shows through her hard work and enthusiasm in class. In Janiah's own words, she sums up what it means to be a stellar student. "I like to be happy and good to my friends and teachers." Well, Janiah, mission accomplished. You are all of that and more. Let's hear it for Janiah Fuller, our Wallace School Student of the Month for 2022. Next, we are going to honor Kaylee Rivera. Unfortunately, Kaylee was unable to join us this evening, but nonetheless, we will celebrate her. Kaylee was nominated by her fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Reinauer. Kaylee has shown amazing progress with both her academics and social growth in the past few months. She always appropriately advocates to visit Ms. Kiana or Ms. Ellis to talk to when she needs to. She works very hard every day during class and always tries her best. She is kind and nurturing to the other students in the classroom. She always helps her peers when they need assistance and is empathetic to their varying abilities. Kaylee has made vast improvements in her writing, spelling, and math skills. She is a great friend and is always helping the teacher in class. Kaylee is an asset to the Wallace School because she is kind and friendly. She never judges people and keeps an open mind. She sticks up for her peers if she feels their voice is not heard. She is funny and gets along with many different groups of students. Kaylee loves to draw and is an amazing artist. She is creative and works hard to practice her drawing skills to get better. She likes to watch Netflix and work on her YouTube channel. Her friends Alicia and Ava said, "Kaylee is confident, kind, brave, and nice. She's respectful and caring to her friends. She's never mean to anyone." "Kaylee is wise beyond her years, a smart, considerate, and kind student. She is strong, determined, and brilliant,"added Ms. Kiana. And finally, Ms. Ellis continued, "Kaylee is extremely loving, kind, and respectful. She is an exceptionally talented artist and is able to express herself well through the use of drawing and other creative modalities. She is an advocate for her friends along with those with differences and disabilities. Kaylee is a compassionate animal lover." Choosing our Student of the Month is a celebration of character, and Kaylee is a great example of this. As her principal, I appreciate how dedicated she is to the well-being of her classmates and her overall kindness to everyone. She is truly the embodiment of a Wallace Wildcat. Kaylee is the epitome of the quote, "Be kind whenever possible." It is always possible. With that said, we celebrate Kaylee Rivera, the Wallace School Student of the Month for June 2022. At this time, I would like to invite Principal Mara of the Hoboken Middle School to the podium.
I would like to call up Gage Angley. It is my pleasure to introduce Gage Angley, a proud member of the Class of 2023 and our May 2022 Overall Student of the Month. Gage is described by his teachers as a vital part of the classroom community. He radiates a balance of positivity and lightheartedness. Gage is driven by his curiosity, which is contagious in the classroom. He not only encourages his peers, but he ignites a passion for learning in them. Gage shared with me that he was honored and excited upon hearing the news that he was Overall Student of the Month for May. Gage is very active in activities in and out of school. In school, Gage is part of our Student Council, the Best Buddies Program, and serves as an ambassador for our Rising Sixth Grade Buddy Program. He also participated in the Passport to Wellness Program last fall. Outside of school, he plays travel soccer, travel lacrosse, and plays hockey for the Jersey City Capitals. In his spare time, Gage enjoys spending time with his family. Mom and Dad... Mom and Dad and his two brothers, Miles, a freshman at Hoboken High School, and Brant, a fourth grader at Wallace. He loves to play basketball with his brothers and have movie nights and travel with his entire family. His favorite place to be with his family is Lake George, but a memorable trip was going to Mount Tremblant in Canada, where they went fly fishing, rode dune buggies, and went go-karting and hiking. In the summer, you can find Gage on a lake or a field, but in the winter, it's ice or the slopes. He has lived in Hoboken his entire life and has gone to school with many of his friends since pre-K. Gage is also a very good magician, and he plays the guitar. Gage is not sure where he wants to go to college, but he is leaning towards a career in engineering, even though his favorite subject is ELA. Having observed him myself working with our upcoming students, I think that you definitely need to consider a path in education. Please join me in congratulating our May Student of the Month for 2022, Gage Angley. I would like to call up Vivian Allen. It is my pleasure to introduce Vivian Allen, a proud member of the Class of 2023 and our June 2022 Overall Student of the Month. Vivian is described by her teachers as embodying the Dewey quote, "Education is not preparation for life, education is life itself." She is intrinsically motivated and seeks ways to further her knowledge and understanding in all she attempts. Vivian is extraordinarily well-rounded and very bright. It is apparent that Vivian enjoys school, and her willingness to challenge herself to succeed is admirable. She takes great care and pride in all of her work. Vivian was pleasantly surprised and very grateful upon hearing the news that she was Overall Student of the Month for June. Vivian is a very active member of the Theater Program in both the District Musical Matilda and the HMS Production of Teen. Additionally, she dances at the Mile Square Theater and feels like a part of the family there. This past year, she was also a part of the Metropolitan Opera Company's performance of De Maestro Singer. Last year, Vivian was inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. Her favorite subject is English, and she is an avid writer and loves being challenged to write in different styles. She thoroughly enjoys Ms. Painter's class discussions and the materials they are studying. Vivian hopes to go to either Yale, Columbia, or Dartmouth and plans to study either acting or medicine, or maybe both. Vivian really enjoys playing board games and watching movies with her family. They also travel to Disney World and the Outer Banks, which are two of the favorite places that they go. The most interesting place Vivian has been is to Hawaii. She found it interesting because of the culture and climate. She says, "It's such a beautiful place, and we were staying on an active volcano. We saw wildlife, hiked the volcano, went to Alouo, learned about Hawaiian culture, and ate amazing food." Vivian's hobbies include singing, dancing, painting, and acting, but she also enjoys cleaning and organizing. It may surprise you to learn that Vivian does not like cookies or ice cream, which always seems to surprise her friends. Please join me in congratulating Vivian Allen, Student of the Month for June. I will now call up Ms. Pica Page, our Principal of Hoboken High School.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to call up Gabriela Velez, Hoboken High School Student of the Month for the month of May. She just came from the National Spanish Honor Society, which is going on right now. She's got her stole to wear on graduation day, June 23rd. The true definition of a redwing is standing right next to me. I've had the pleasure of getting to know Gabby over the past four years. She has grown into a beautiful and remarkable young lady. She is ambitious, hard-working, and dependable. She has a quiet demeanor, but do not let that fool you as she has a sharp intellect and a witty personality. Gabriela sets standards for excellence in the classroom, and her transcript is evidence of exactly that. She has taken the most diverse courses that have expanded her knowledge greatly. She has received high honor roll during her high school career. She has especially excelled in her Spanish advanced courses. She has accomplished memberships in the honor societies and became vice president for student government, all which showcase her innate ability towards success. Academics are not her only strength as she is just as committed to co-curricular activities as well. Her resume is impressive: soccer, indoor and outdoor track and field, debate club, youth group, teen action task force, Heroes in Cold Kids, student government, and the Spanish National Honor Society. Perhaps Ms. Stella Rosa said it best. Gabriela Velez is an outstanding young lady who is dedicated to her studies while being an active member of her community and social service. Gabriela excels in Spanish and inspires others to greater achievement in the language. As a senior, Gabby earned the Seala by Literacy this year. She took the ACTFL Assessment of Performance toward proficiency in languages. We are proud of Gabby and celebrate her dedication to language learning and honor her efforts to inspire others for a second language. Gabby is a member of the Lin-Manuel Miranda Chapter of the Spanish National Honor Society. I'm sure you could say that with a little more flair than I just did. Ms. Chekhov shared that Gabby is a natural leader and displays diligence and compassion at all times. I could always count on her to be enthusiastically participating. Gabby's determination to succeed is commendable and served as an inspiring model for other students to follow. I asked our honoree a few questions, and this is what she had to say. "Being able to create amazing connections with teachers, staff members, and friends that helped guide me to the hard-working person I am" was her favorite experience at Hoboken High School. She gets her drive from her parents, who are her biggest fans and her motivators. "They push me beyond the limits to accomplish everything I've wanted to and more." She also credits her involvement both inside and outside the school community. Gabby will be attending the University of New Haven this fall with the major in investigative services and a minor in forensic science. As long as I've known Gabby, she has been pursuing her dream of working in the FBI. I know, first I was like, "Okay, FBI," but it has never, ever faltered. That is what she's gonna do. She enjoys being with her family, reading a good book, or binge-watching Netflix when she is not involved in her favorite activities, student government, or teen action task force. She has many friends, but where there is a Gabby, there is always a Tony. They are like peas and carrots, and her friends, not just Tony, describe her as loyal, caring, and hard-working. Gabby envisions moving forward with her masters over the next few years and applying to the FBI. "We will miss you and your very infectious smile. Best of everything to one of the best." At this time, I'd like to call up George Carrion, Hoboken High School Student of the Month for the month of June. Also at the National Spanish Honor Society with his beautiful stole. It has taken me a few years to get it straight, but I can now get the name 95% of the time right, George and Jose. Because he's got a twin brother. I could never get their names straight, but finally, something just clicked, and I get them correct all the time. One thing for sure, though, George has carved a path for himself and has made great strides over the past four years. He continues to impress me with all his accomplishments. George has challenged himself by selecting the most demanding classes. This was his decision, and he found that by taking the highest-level classes, he would be surrounded by students that would continue to challenge him. All of this dedication and hard work paid off in the classroom because George has maintained his impressive 4.1 GPA. George is an active participant in our Environmental Science Club and has taken on admirable roles in advocating for the planet throughout the years. It does not stop there because George participates in co-curricular activities with a great sense of pride, some of which include bowling, science club, Spanish Honor Society, international club, mock trial, United Nations, and literacy club. Ms. Kurna shared that it has been a pleasure teaching George this past year. He always looks on the bright side of things and is ready with a smile no matter what. He is one of the hardest workers I know in class and has also found help in other students, whether it be with schoolwork or just good advice. Mr. Perez said that George is very considerate of others around him and knows how to communicate with his peers as well as the faculty. As a teacher, I've never had George prior to this year, but thankful to have had him in my AP Environmental Science class. He did a remarkable job in class. Mr. McCauley said George is an amazing, talented person. I'm reminded of a great line in the movie Beckett. "It is not often that one gets to see the ghost of one's former self." George reminds me of an 18-year-old McCauley, full of energy, briefly awkward, and ambitious. I have the best faith that George will succeed in any field he pursues. Dependable, strong character, go-to guy, all come to mind when you spend time with George. I have found his sense of humor on more than one occasion to be just what I needed. He values cultural diversity and being part of the community by making a positive impact on those around him. George has a quiet confidence, and he enables all those with whom he comes into contact to feel at ease. He comes from a close family that has always taken a strong interest in the development of a well-rounded person, and I truly believe it was mission accomplished. When I asked George what his best experience at Hoboken High School was, he shared the innocence and wonder that came with freshman year, how each moment became a brand-new experience. He cites his passion as the root of all his high school successes. After graduation, he will be attending St. Peter's University. He is excited for the brand-new experiences that lie ahead to build new friendships and pursue a career in business. He enjoys taking each and every moment of free time with his friends, whether it's talking online or hanging with them outside. He enjoyed bowling and debate club as he was able to meet a ton of new people. When asked where he would be in five years, he imagines that he will be one of the richest men alive. He will use his vast wealth to help others. I hope to become a philanthropist and to help others rise above and unlock their true potential. You are a truly remarkable young man. Congratulations, George.
Now, we will celebrate the work of our Hoboken Middle School students in four distinguished contests, challenges, or competitions. We will provide a brief description of the event and then have them come up for, obviously, applause and some pictures. I will have Dr. Baskinger, supervisor, lead this portion of the recognitions.
Good evening. Now, we will celebrate the work of our HMS students in four distinguished contests, challenges, and competitions. We will provide a brief description of the event and have them come up for applause and pictures, and I'm pretty sure Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez already said that. Our first contest is the Hudson County Law Day Contest. In early March 2022, students at Hoboken Middle School competed in the annual Hudson County Law Day Contest. Students had the opportunity to write essays, poems, raps, and showcase their photography skills. The results are in. Four HMS students have won first-place prizes and were honored in a Zoom ceremony. Thank you to those teachers who helped lead this writing contest. Your dedication to our students and their continued success is very much appreciated. Please join me in recognizing the following students. When I call your name, please come up. India Magalatta. Truman Pinsner. Jay Malik. And Jax Jalen Rosado. Next, we have our National Social Studies League and National Geography Challenge. The National Social Studies League contest consisted of 40 questions. These questions were based on topics in American Studies: Geography of the United States and the United States Government appropriate to each grade level. Additionally, the National Geography Challenge was a contest requiring 35 minutes and containing 40 questions. The contest reflected main themes of geography, location, place, relationships within places, or human-environment interactions, relationships between places or movement, and regions. Please join me in recognizing Harrison Green. We're still going. Next, we have our Steam Tank winners. Style Green Boutique by Ace Backstrom and Sophie Katz won first place in the Style Green Boutique by Ace Backstrom and Sophie Katz won first place in the 2022 Steam Tank Challenge, Middle School Division, and received the following awards. The Sustainability Award, Innovative Use of Technology in Design Award, the Jedi Award, Entrepreneurship Award, Subject Matter Expert Award, and the Creativity Exemplar Integration of the Arts Award, and $2,500. The awards were given to teams who provided concrete evidence their idea or invention is not harmful to the environment, creativity, expertise, knowledge, and high business skills, which Style Green Boutique demonstrated. Style Green Boutique is a free, customized, sustainable website with stylists. Fast fashion does not use environmentally friendly fabrics, and this is where Style Green Boutique comes in. It all starts with a free style survey, and they give personalized style recommendations and products that are good for the environment or help you style whatever you have in your closet already. Not only do they work at a personal level, they can also provide existing companies with a certification from Style Green Boutique that certifies them for sustainable fashion. Congratulations. Ace Backstrom, Sophie Katz. Our last award, the Annual Physics Olympiad Competition. On Thursday, March 31st, students across Hoboken Middle School in grades six through eight competed in the Second Annual Physics Olympiad hosted by the Physical Science Research Associates. This virtual competition gave students a chance to showcase their physics and science skills through multiple-choice questions and open-ended questions, allowed students to be truly challenged and think outside the physics box. Questions focused on mechanics, optics, and electricity, and also included skills such as mathematical practice. I'm going to be reading our winners' names. As I call your name, may come up to the board, come up to the front. Adrian Giantski. Leo DeCock. Axel Holstrom. Elizabeth Bright. Rain Sayan. Alexander Kulithros. Lucas Dally. Sarah Burns. Roldan Diaz Olivero. Isis Cruz. Darian Ladson. Maxim Schisler. Jenna Siriho. Ethan Sikernisky. Rafael Calamari. Zachary Shaw Belafato. Kevin Melendez. Jaren Penya. Evangeline Rahausser. Jada Acevedo. Jonathan Offer. Sam Decker. Elizabeth Watkins. Amelie Katamartori. Caroline Feid. Malaysia Hi. Priya Wolfsky. Truman Pinsner. And Cameron Dally. Congratulations. That concludes our recognition portion of the event. Congratulations to all of our students recognized tonight. Keep up the good work, have a great summer, and we'll see you next year. We are going to take a minute break and then we'll resume our meeting, so have a nice night, everybody. Okay, we're going to resume the meeting now. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report tonight? We will move on to curriculum, Ms. Simons.
Good evening. The meeting, Curriculum Committee, met on Thursday, June 9th at noon. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Katamartori, Ms. Delara, Mr. Cluffell, and myself. There are no items for approval this month, however, we reviewed a couple items that I'd like to note. The health and PE curriculum will be rewritten by the end of the summer to include the new state requirements. If the state does not move forward with all pieces, we will use what we have. We will carve out pieces that families will be able to opt in or out during family nights for topics including sexual activity. We will also keep the current biological topics in place at the high school level. The algebra curriculum is undergoing improvements at the high school. Curriculum work will be completed over the summer by the math team utilizing Mathematics Vision Program to focus on word problems and to include culturally relevant work. In September, there will be some movement to create equity of programming amongst the three elementary schools in the music department. A tutoring program at the high school will begin in the fall. It will be staffed by Steven students for their work-study program and overseen by the Hoboken High School teachers. Topics will be math-driven but will also include literacy review. The program will be available during lunch period and approximately for an hour after school. And finally, summer work, including live links, have been distributed to families via email yesterday from Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. All students will read a book and complete a choice board in ELA. They will engage in either IXL or Edgenuity for mathematics, which will allow them to refine skills and standards necessary to the upcoming grade level. If families require printed copies of the math work or need assistance with any materials, please do not hesitate to contact your building administrators. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. McGurk.
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met virtually on Thursday, June 9th, 2022, in attendance were Ms. Katamartori, Ms. Kana, Mr. Callagie, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, and myself. There are two agenda items on this month's Board Agenda for Review, and we recommend both for board approval. Safety and fire drill reports for all five schools, along with approving the lease for pre-K space at the Jubilee Center. This lease will enable four pre-K classrooms to move into the Jubilee Center serving 60 children, freeing up valuable space at the elementary school level while continuing to provide high-quality, no-cost pre-K to the Hoboken community. The committee also discussed the completed work at the Field House at JFK Stadium, which included roofing work and some work on gutters, and projects that will be completed over the summer. Those projects include much-needed work on various bathrooms throughout the district that are being funded by the School Development Authority grant received for the 2021-2022 school year. And that's my report.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Delatorre.
Good evening. The Finance Committee met on Friday, June 10th. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Kana, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Angley, and myself. All agenda items were discussed, and we recommend all for approval. Please note that in Section 10.10, we are approving our Architect of Record, Mount Vernon Group Architects, and our Bond Counsel, Walens, Goldman, and Spitzer. Please be aware that this is in no way signals that a referendum is imminent. The board is required to have an Architect of Record. Bond Counsel is needed to advise the board on financing options for any and all future projects that may be considered. In an effort to be more transparent to the community, it has our full commitment that any discussions around new schools will reflect what we learned from the past referendum, our community survey, and countless emails and meetings with residents across the ideological spectrum. Thank you.
Thank you. Governance, Mr. Kirian.
Good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met just past one day. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamartori, Mr. Cluffell, Ms. Simons, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. The summer's upon us, and tonight's agenda includes a number of typical items focused on activities that take place over the summer, like staffing for extended school years, summer middle-school kickball league, LEAP, marching band, instrumental summer camps, and summer credit recovery, as well as child student evaluations. Additionally, the agenda includes planning for the upcoming 2022-2023 school year, including new and replacement staff, hiring, athletic program assignments, coach approvals, and the like. A few other items to note, Sections 9.114, 15, and 16, want to thank all those who are giving their time as volunteers to various district programs. Section 9.17 is a resolution that approves the implementation of New Jersey Governor Executive Order Title 18A, Education Section 18A dot 30 dot 9 dot 1, having to do with unused vacation time for approved essential personnel from the 2020 to 2022 school years. Essential employees were those that were required to come into the office throughout the pandemic, particularly custodians, administrators, computer and tech teams, in order to support the ongoing operations of the district. So we put that on the agenda today to approve the implementation of that executive order. In Section 9.18, I want to note the approval of scholarships for the graduating class of 2022. Congratulations to all those students who were awarded these scholarships, and many thanks to the local community members and organizations who generously fund these scholarships and awards each year. On a related note, we are proud to share that the Hoboken High School graduating class of 2022 have earned more than $18 million in academic and merit scholarships from their college and university acceptances, so those are separate and apart from the scholarships that are on the agenda today. So so proud of all of our students and their accomplishments and wishing them well as they embark onto the world past high school. Lastly, in Section 9.30, approval of the district's HIV grades for the 2020-2021 school year are on the agenda tonight. Once approved, those will be posted for public review on our website. And then one last update, we've talked in previous meetings about the upcoming Orton-Gillingham training, so I just wanted to follow up on that. There will be roughly 50 teachers participating, either in training in the last week of June or during sessions over the summer, and then maybe a few that would get chained just before the school year starts. And so we're excited to be rolling out this training and making this wonderful program available to our teachers to help them, help all of our children reach the literacy levels that they should.
Thank you. Wellness, Ms. Delara.
The Wellness Committee met on June 9th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Simons, and myself. There are no items on the agenda for tonight approval, just a few summer initiatives that we will be rolling out, Family Field Night, look out for those dates, those will be coming out within the next couple of weeks, and the Kickball League, the registration for that went out already, and that is for all incoming sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. We are excited for Girls in the Run Initiative, which will start in the fall, and we discussed Urban Farming Initiative, which will be taking place in all of our elementary schools with the help of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's hard to believe that the last day of school is only a short time away. That being said, we'll be here for both July and August board meetings. I also want to point out for anyone interested in running for the Hoboken Board of Education this November that the petition filing deadline is July 25th, 2022. Petitions can be picked up from the County Clerk's Office, which is located at 257 Cornelian Avenue, fourth floor, Jersey City. During COVID, they were available online. I'm not sure if they will be posted there again this year. And now we will move into public comments on agenda items. We have one named Pat Waiters. Doesn't look like she's here. Okay, so we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Who did the second, Ms. McGurk? Ms. Katamartori?
Yes.
Ms. Deliar?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Kirian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and now we'll move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. I'm just going to make one statement before we start, and this is just a reminder before we open public comments. Over the years and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board a party to comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve a speaker from liability or any defamatory comments that an employee may bring up against the speaker. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. I also want to remind any speakers of board policy stating your name and municipality. Go ahead, in five minutes.
Good evening, Roseanne Versace, Wallace School Teacher, Hoboken. During the public comment portion of the May Board of Education meeting, some comments were made related to the security and safety of Hoboken High School, as well as the integrity of an educator there and a member of the Hoboken Education Association. After a thorough investigation, it was found that these claims did not have any merit. I would like to point out, had there been any possibility that they were valid, the HEA would not have only been made aware of these claims by its members, but action would have been taken as the statements implied serious threats to the safety and security of the students and staff. Furthermore, the teacher in question absolutely would not tolerate such an incident in his class. He is held in high regard and admired by his students and colleagues alike. Moreover, and most importantly, he is someone who cares deeply about the educational development and success of his students, as well as their social and emotional well-being. Please be assured that creating and maintaining a safe and secure environment in our schools is the highest priority for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Waiters, she's not here. Manuel Rivera is not here, and Ms. Emily Jabor.
Good evening. My name is Emily Jabor. I live on Grant Street in Hoboken. I am here this evening to speak on behalf of Moms Demand Action of Hudson County. As some of you may know, I co-lead our chapter for Hudson County and wanted to just commemorate that the first weekend in June is recognized as National Gun Violence Awareness Weekend. We wear orange that weekend to commemorate the life of a young woman named Hadia Pendleton, who was gunned down in Chicago in her neighborhood one week after appearing in Washington DC at President Obama's first inaugural parade. She played in the marching band and then returned home and was killed a week later before her 16th birthday. So we wear orange that weekend because... So, we wear orange that weekend because orange was her favorite color, but it was also chosen specifically because when hunters are in the woods, they use orange to signify human life and to say, this is a human life that should not be killed, which is kind of a horrible thing for children to have to experience. Also, since your last board meeting, we have all experienced the news of what happened in Texas at a school there, and we are reminded that schools are not safe places, nor are grocery stores, nor are movie theaters. And unfortunately, there is an increasing trend where, especially during COVID, there has been an increase in firearms in our country. When I first started organizing with Moms Demand Action, the statistic I would cite was that ninety-four people were killed a day because of gun violence. That today is now one hundred and ten. We're going in the wrong direction. Schools should be safe places, and so I rise today to ask that all of you keep gun violence in the front of your minds, not just in June, but it's something that we think about and work every day to address, because that's what it's going to take. And I'm very pleased to see that there is action happening at the national level, there's action happening in New Jersey. I'm very proud that we live in New Jersey because we are a state that prioritizes laws to ensure gun violence prevention. However, New Jersey is only as safe as our neighboring state, and unfortunately, many of the crimes that are committed are done with illegal guns that are obtained in other states. So, it is incumbent upon all of us, and I hope all of you tonight as Board of Ed trustees, to think about the ways that we can continue to try and fight to keep for safe spaces for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last name on the list.
Okay. We are going to be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation and matters covered by attorney-client privilege, so we will not be taking action and coming back. We will just come back to close the meeting, and we will be approximately thirty to forty minutes. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Can I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamartori?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clubphil?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Akarian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, it is now 9:06 PM, and we were just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion, second.
Roll call, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I'm writing 9:06. Who did the motion?
Sheila.
In a second? Okay. Ms. Katamartori?
Yes.
Ms... Let me put my glasses on. This would help. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, but I gotta do it in order. Ms. Delira?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clubphil?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Akarian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
And with no further...
Motion passes.
And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Hold the motion, please.
Joyce.
Joyce, okay. In a second, was Sheila?
Amy.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Amy.
She's, uh, Amy has a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.